Let's call our meeting to order. We want to thank each one that's here today, and it's such a beautiful day. And we will ask Mr. Woody Hall Young if he would lead us in our indication.
Good. For heaven and father, we thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day. To heaven and father, and for all the blessings of this life, which we know come from your boundless hand. For heaven and father, we thank you for the opportunity, Lord, and the privilege, so that these are citizens of Avery County. Lord, we ask your blessings upon this meeting. To heaven and father, we ask, Lord, and according to your will, that decisions would be made. Thank you, Lord, and we praise you for all things, but especially, Lord, for Jesus. For his name we pray, amen.
Amen. Let's all stand then, say our pledge of allegiance. Ms. Phillips, would you read that same pledge?
My pledge of allegiance is that I am the United States of America, and liberty, liberty, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to thank each and every commissioner that's here. We have one absent, Mr. Blake Vance. And we'll move right along. If anyone is here to speak in public comments, you need to sign up with our secretary here, Ms. Cindy Turby. All right, we'll move right along. Three point two A, Proclamations and Awards.
Madam Chairman, I believe we do have one, so all invite Mr. Moody and his guests to the podium.
I'll have our district commissioner, Kelly, he can start to talk to you about what award you get for Ron.
Hey, so I'm here, it's a pleasure to award the Avery County, our NC State Cooperative Extension Partnership Award. And so before I do my little spiel, I just want to tell you that I have several counties that cover the West District. And my top performing counties have three ingredients. They have a very good extension leader, which you have here with Jerry. He definitely cares about his people. Have a staff that does what needs to be done, they work extra hard, they really care about their citizens and their program area. And the third ingredient is all of you and the county residents here. It really takes a partnership with the county to make extension that high level, high performing. So I truly just want to thank you. You have all three ingredients, and your extension program is one of the best, I believe, in the state. So I just want to cover a few things that Jerry wrote in his application to you on behalf of you to receive the. It takes examples of your cooperative and our partnership and the initiatives that have been undertaken with the four H Summer Wild Program. It's a longstanding program, and thousands of youth have been touched and worked with and benefited from that program. Numerous ag equipment over the years has been bought and purchased so that our staff can teach and coach and assist the growers in this county to be profitable. There was a collection of over 23,000 pounds of unwanted pesticides collected and disposed of. It contributed $1.5 million to build a community center, and at the time of this application, which... There's more, there's more people. But from June 15th to the time of this application, 50 events and over 6,500 people were in attendance already to that. You would also to the whole facility. The last, I'm just going to read this because Jerry wrote this in it, it's good, it says, "Our latest accomplishments have been coordinated effort between Avery County Government and NC Cooperative Extension Avery County Center in providing COVID-19 vaccinations. Utilized the new Avery Community Center at Heritage Park to handle the vaccinations of our citizens. Our staff organized, made appointments, and aided seven other county departments in the vaccination process. From January 2021 through May 2021, we vaccinated 5,500 citizens. And we worked with the local farmer health program and the other county departments to vaccinate over 440 H2A and H2B seasonal workers. We estimate that we are able to reach 90% of the potential Hispanic workforce." One of the comments that our county manager, Phil Berryer, received was that he was a tickleay of the vaccinations. Isn't that true? But that I'm going to turn over to Jerry, because I can't read that. I don't have my glasses.
I got some sunglasses. I got some sunglasses.
Yeah, that won't help me at all, that won't help me at all. I gotta get down here and see it. The County Government Partnership Award presented to Avery County Board of Commissioners. In recognition of the outstanding partnership through commitment of resources, inclusiveness, and county government advocacy and involvement on this date, August 12th, 2021.
So thank you very much.
Thank y'all so much.
And I think we've got, Kelly, I'm sorry, I know you're the boss, but Jerry is top notch.
I agree.
Together, we are, we did the best, we got the best right here, so I appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, board, for all the support. All Jerry's gone, he's probably the best you can find. Great job.
All right, we'll move right along to three point two B, Public Comments. Is anyone signed up, Ms. Cindy? All right. Three point three A, Our Subdivision Approval Sunset Lodge, Phase Three, and Red Sky at Eagle's Nest Lots.
Lord, I was looking for anybody here from the planning department, so. Any questions I want you to have in front of you. Looking at two, basically two phases. One would be the final phase of the S lots, which we've used, we've seen Phase One and Two. This is final Phase Three, on that of the S lots, and then a new small section at Red Sky at Eagle's Nest. And that's a nine lot section, kind of right above the Wibery that we went to in there, in those fields. That's one there, but that's no more expansion, that's a lot of phased part, that's kind of one done right there. Sitting around on top of the Knoll, right on the Knoll, big views right there.
Well, we have the minutes from the planning board, and everyone has been able to read them, and they approve these plots. And has any commissioner got a question for Derek?
Got one from Ms. Michelle. Do we need to do these individually?
Well, I mean, you can have one motion to approve. Or separate motions.
Right. If anyone has any more questions, do I hear a motion to approve Eagle's Nest Holdings Sunset Lot, Phrase Three? Lots S-118, S-119, and S-121 through S-28. And then Red Sky at Eagle's Nest Lots, RS1-RS9.
We'll move.
All right, we have a motion to approve, and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, we say aye.
Mr. Martin, I'll give you two.
All right. I did have one, but I... It's been Cindy's office, she wants to come up around.
Inspection's drop key, I'll put my office, because they've got my great signature on them, they look like. Do you know anything about it? This is what I have.
This, this is not from my office, this is, yeah, it's probably just a...
Yeah, I mean.
Yes, I think that's the paper, paper copy, isn't it? This is back from my office. The same thing, we just, they keep the copy of the...
I think it's probably inspection's copy.
Add them to the copy she's got, that's probably the paper copy that inspections did her. Because we got the mylar.
I usually get one more of that, it's a copy. As long as you got what you need.
Yeah, but mylar's usually what we use, and once you step in, sign off, and I think they usually keep the... You got a copy, the paper copy of it?
Okay, all right, good. I sit and follow by your finger.
Is that there? Those are the S lots. I'm not making my name off in the store, but... Well, I tell you what, trying to get one of them stores, you might as well go, it's unbelievable. Crazy. Yeah, the normal store's shut down, they just had a big open, big open base. All right, now this is Big Red Sky. Uh, there. But it was, it was fine, it was worth the drive. I've not heard anything today. Aaron said, told me yesterday that, they said he's septic. You heard anything today? I think that's it, thank you very much. Thank you, board.
We'll move right along to three point three B, Our Tax Administrators Report, Bruce Sand.
Start with the monthly collections for October for your approval of $6,109,127.16.
Your phrase.
I paid my tax.
Yeah, we got Mr. Berryers and nobody else.
Have a motion on the floor to approve, and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Along with collections, sometimes Mr. Young comes to me for releases. Before the month of October, we have a grand total of $630.36.
Those go through.
All right, we have a motion to approve, do I hear second? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Now, Mr. Young, he will send discovery bills on 90% of everything.
Yeah.
Probably all of them.
A lot of that will be revealed, yeah.
I finally figured that out after about the first and second meeting, when I wore the wilder releases.
Just got to get it to the...
Finally explained it.
Got to get it to the right person.
Sometimes we have it to the right person, sometimes we don't. You know, sometimes people don't really pay attention to all the paperwork they get from the tax office and throw it away, and anyway, here we are. Revaluation sales for October 2021, you can see another rather robust month of 158 sales. At 65% of the sales ratio compared to last year of 161 sales. At 80% of assessments, the sales price ratio, so we're looking at, the prices are continuing to go up for the most part. Some of it comically and ridiculously so, but it is still happening. So along those lines, let me give you a few numbers that I came up with today as way of explanation for what we're doing. Rebounds, we're supposed to look at four years' worth of sales, so this rebound period would go from January 1st, 2018. So from January 1st, 2018, through October 31st, Avery County, we had 3,374 qualified sales. So 30, almost 3,400 sales in not quite a four-year period. Break that down even further, if you go to May of last year, May 1st of 2020, through October 31st of 2021, we had 2,000 of those sales taken. In five-month period. So two-thirds of our sales for this four-year period have taken place in the last year and a half. Destroyed the work that we've done on rebound, because we're trying to get four years' worth of numbers crammed into the last three months of the year. So that's why we might be lagging a little bit behind on some of this stuff. Any number fees, prices that we're doing in our schedule. Be submitted. I've attached a little letter, also into your view totals, indicating the process, along with the dates that I have recommended to. For getting this done, but this is one, you know, normally this is done a month sooner, but with all these sales and everything. I would propose, you know, the dates for the process of submitting, the schedule of value to you, and to get this to the public. But I present the schedule on November 15th. We then have to publish the newspaper, publish in the newspaper, the submitter of the schedule of values, so we can do that at that point in time. And then there's a copy available in the tax office for. We can have a public hearing on December 6th at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners. And in such time as that public hearing is held, then we just publish the order of adoption in the newspaper for the following four weeks. So we can do that December 8th, December 10, 29th. In compliance with the schedule of values being presented and approved. And the last day that a taxpayer would have to appeal the schedule of values.
Complicated.
It gets complicated from all, so hopefully, nobody will appeal the schedule of values on. It would be a process to get that submitted to the Property Tax Commission and everything. To my knowledge, it has never happened, you recall it ever happened. So it's just, 90%, 95% of the schedule of values is still or is the same from rebound or rebound, just in describing the process. And the other 5% is the actual. Like that, so. Most of it's pretty boilerplate stuff, and it's just a question of the... Trying to use the Marshall and Swift Valuation Service, which is free. Or air cost per square foot. Think we're pretty well covered, if anybody wants to argue. And that being said, Ms. Berry, I also wanted to mention that there was a, a B for more approval at some point in time also. Contract with Atlas Mapping Services in order to take over the maintenance of our GIS. To see how that process is going to work actually. That way. So we've had some. Orders for getting them. I'm actually really optimistic about working with them, having a really good meeting. That we'll be doing for our county. And very impressed with what they have done. That'll be something in four packets, that you may have already seen, but just in, just giving you some.
And we talked, Bruce and I have talked about the benefits of going with this company. Number one, the cost savings is tremendous, and then the service that they say they're going to offer. So that's why we've signed a contract through, through June. We can get through the budget process, see where we're at, have time to sit down, roll up our sleeves, and say, now what's the best thing for our county? Stay with the contract or hire our mapper, so. They're ready to roll up their sleeves and get started.
They're ready, they'll be contacting us this week, they'll be going through Dennis to get into our networks and servers. We've set up a procedure, they, someone I met with last, last week.
Friday?
Last Friday, he was, he says, hey, look, he says, the way that you're doing it, he said, that's perfect for us. He said, we don't need to change anything, if you're happy with how it's being done, we'll continue that. So all of our people already know how to get that information in the format that they're going to need. So it's just a matter of literally having a folder on a desktop where we scan information into, and then they literally. So hopefully, you know, it's going to be a process updated. Right now, we're going to be looking at sending us an update every two weeks through the end of this year. As far as being able to get any, lots like this, some of these, we just pop them into the system and priced before the first of the year. Give us that information. And then we're going to look and see if that, if that schedule, or if we can just go through the winter months, I think once a month will probably be. But until the rebound comes through.
Will they have any physical presence here at all, or everything be remote?
Everything will be remote, they may stop by every once in a while to pay a visit, to make sure everything's okay. If we have any issue, someone will. But as of right now, my understanding is everything is.
Bruce, what was your figures for 2018, I didn't...
For the total number of sales from, 3,374 from January 1st to the end of October this year. We're at 128.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions or concerns? Right now, I don't think so, this is just kind of.
Just the information.
Informing you of what, the first time we're actually will have to be taken, I would be on the 15th. Thank you very much, appreciate you.
Anyway, thank you. All right, we'll move right along to three point three C, Lease with Whammy, Community Action.
Board, this is a resolution authorizing the lease of the property to Whammy Community Action. It is the new piece of property we just bought on Beach Street for them to use for an after-school program where they received a grant through June 30, 2022. The lease is also attached, along with a map showing where, what parts of the building they will be using. They are going to work on a permanent location for them to have this after-school program that they're going to call the Hangout for middle school aged children. But they just had a need, they were going to have to possibly return the grant back to the state if they could not find a space. So they are so excited about this. So we're just asking that you approve the lease, and if you approve the lease, then they would like to, they'll have an open house tomorrow night to explain the program and to show off the facility from 5:00 to 7:00. And I have to brag on our maintenance department, for going in there and fixing the water leaks that we found, and the heater's running, and Whammy's over there right now cleaning the building as long as you can. So hopefully, you sign the approval of the lease, and that program will begin for our middle school students in Avery County school system.
Do I need to read the lease, or can we go ahead and approve?
I was going to ask Michelle, what do I need to read?
I think it's just, it's just a summary of the resolution, and just so the board knows that it's, Phillip said the property over on Beach Street. And it's her lease that's set to expire at the end of this year. Responsible for all the utilities they occupy the building.
I don't, I don't know if everyone completely read it or not, but I did. And then also, in the event that we, someone look at it more thoroughly, to do some work on, do have the ability to have access at any time.
Yes, so we can move ahead with our formal plan for the, for the building. And that was another reason not to lease the entire building, so. If things were to line up and the starts lined up, we could start working on other parts of the building. I want to thank Michelle, because drove her crazy getting this put together, so, Michelle, thank you.
All right, do I hear them?
I may have to pray.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you, and like I said, if anyone has the opportunity tomorrow night, I know it will tickle Whammy if you can go by between 5:00 and 7:00 for their open house. I'll let them know they can have their open house. Thank you.
All right, we'll move right along to three point four A, Our County Manager's Report.
I've got a lot, but I'll try to, I'll try to do a good job with you, and I know it says number one and number two, but you're going to get more than that from me today. So COVID update, just to let everyone know where we're at. Our health director let us know that the week of the 25th through Halloween, through the 31st, 22 positives cases in Avery. Only four of those were school age under 18. So it seems to be, we seem to be turning a curve on that. With that said, I want to quickly remind everyone, so the boosters are available now. It's on our county website, there's information, if you call the 733-8273 COVID hotline, there's plenty of information there. The Baker Center, Avery Pharmacy, Cross Door Drug, Premier, High Country Community Care, CBS, and Walgreens all have booster shots available. The health department with the Ag Center will offer boosters, Mass Clinic, we are taking appointments for that. And that's next Tuesday and Wednesday, the ninth and the 10th. So on the ninth, we'll be administering boosters from 9:00 to 4:00 at the Ag Center, and on Wednesday, from 9:00 to 12:00. So all that information is on our boards and on the website, and will be in the paper and on the radio. And if anyone has any questions, dial the COVID hotline, 8273. And again, Jerry's staff is handling that phone line right now and making the appointments. So again, that shows the partnership we have with our Ag Center, so appreciate that.
Is that with the Moderna shot?
The Moderna is what the county will be offering. There are other opportunities with the other, some of the other pharmacies, you can get the J&amp;J with High Country Community Care, and you can get. Pfizer at CBS. You go to CVS.com to make your appointment there. You can mix, if you prefer. In your agenda consent, Adam, a couple of things I want to point out. So county, you know, as manager and working with this board, we've got five goals written on my board in my office. And it's broadband, workforce housing, peer support program, childcare support, and get a trail grant. So I'll start at the bottom, trail grant, they're meeting this week, so we should hear first of December. So we should hear first of December if we have, we tried last year, we got in the top 10. But you've got to get in the top three to get the money. So hoping this year that we, we enhanced our grant a little bit thanks to the High Country Council of Governments. So we will hear from that trail grant sometime in December. Childcare support, there's some talk through the general assembly and with the senators, you know, about what we can do there, so that'll happen. The peer support program, we have a verbal commitment from Freedom Life. They got a verbal commitment with the Dogwood Health Trust that we did receive the grant for two years to explore a director position for Freedom Life. So when we get the official announcement, we will have more to say about the peer support program. Workforce housing, we did get the grant for the asset inventory assessment, which will, there's three elements to this grant. This grant was $250,000. This again was from the Dogwood Health Trust. I did write a handwritten thank you note to that board. This will inventory and compile our available water and sewer system data through our seven towns that are located in Avery County. It will also look at the wastewater treatment facilities. It'll address any major need of those town water and sewer systems. And it will also do an affordable housing study to identify opportunities for development of the new housing stock and provide developers with data and demand for affordable housing. So if Philip calls and tells Ed Fowler and others, we need some workforce housing, this is going to have some data and some teeth behind it to prove that, yes, this is, you know, we need some apartments, we need some workforce housing in our county. So I cannot thank Dogwood enough for the grant. And like I said, very, very excited about that. Also in your agenda consent item, you'll see that Paul Buchanan and the sheriff's office both got grants this month. Paul received an emergency management grant and the sheriff got a grant for Dayer. So great job on their part. In your informational items, the North Carolina Corporative Extension Family Farms Grant, that is also linked to our website. So if you know any small farms, there is a grant out there. Deadline is the end of this month, I believe. Don't quote me on that, but it is on the website. We have a link for that farm, Family Farm Grant through North Carolina Corporative Extension. I've already mentioned Whammy, the Laton After School Open House tomorrow from 5 to 7. There's some information for you in the informational items about the VIA health numbers and how many citizens in Avery County have been served. Tonight starts a program that I need to go to called Healthy Holiday. Again, put on by the Avery Corporative Extension with Melanie. That starts tonight, so may not make it tonight, but I need to go to the rest of them because the holidays and healthy are not in my vocabulary. Also in your informational items, Avery County Jail, no deficiencies, totally compliant with all their benchmarks of the state. Already mentioned the Freedom Life Grant that we hope will have a formal announcement of that one soon. Have to brag on two individuals from Avery County FFA. They made the top 10 in the national talent competition and that was Ethan Church and Walker Boone. So we will try to get them in here and formally congratulate them on making the top 10 in the nation. Not in the state, in the nation, so very proud of that.
Also, two individuals received the American Award at the National Convention, which is the FFA's highest award.
And they received it.
Yes.
I did not know about that.
LaJah Greg and Ariel Horn.
Yes. Okay. We'll get them here too also, okay? Absolutely. And if you didn't know, we are sitting, this board is sitting with the outstanding executive board member of the year from the High Country Council of Governments, Mr. Dennis Aldrich. Congratulations to that. And I appreciate you. Good job. So I left the best for last. Let's talk about the American Rescue Plan. Caleb's going to help me. I've got some information in your package. We took a six-session class on the rescue plan. We are going to receive money from the federal government. And it's titled, The American Rescue Plan. We have met and this board has decided that we need to fit a lot of effort toward broadband and the lack of affordable, reliable internet for a lot of, a lot of schoolchildren in our county. So that's going to be our goal. There's other goals that the pandemic will address. Address negative economic impacts of the pandemic can be addressed with these funds. But Avery County has grown with the pandemic. So we're kind of opposite of what some other areas have been. Aid for low-income areas and populations. Well, the broadband, you know, if we can get the broadband, that will help those areas. So we'll meet some goals. The problem is, in your package, you have, when we think about a project, this is what we learned from the class, from six sessions of the class. We need to define the project. So we want to expand broadband, make it affordable and make it reliable for all citizens in Avery County. The second part of the project is, is it, do you have state law authority to do the project? And no, we do not. We're in a holding pattern. So we can define what we want to do and then we have to stop. We can't go on down the tubes and get the project down. So I've talked with our House and our Senate representatives. They feel like by January, we will have a House bill and Senate bill passed to allow the county government to spend the money on broadband. So we're going to hold them to that. I'm going to call them every week and keep pushing. Of course, we've got High Country Council of Governments out there to help us. I've got Caleb to help, help us. Julie Wiggins and Phil True promised that as soon as those classes were over and they can get their thoughts together, they're going to call a meeting of the seven county managers that's in the High Country Council of Governments. We will have a meeting so they can see how they can best help support the red tape in order to spend these funds. I did ask Michelle to watch, watch them, the classes also, so she'll be available to help. But right now, Caleb, it's just, we're in a holding pattern. One thing we know, we've got some money, we've got it in an account and we can keep the interest. So that's a positive and that's all we know right now. And I know, I'm as frustrated as everyone on this floor that we can't move forward.
In, in meeting with High Country Council, some other meetings that I've been involved in, where this was discussed, we had people from NC Pro and some other organizations. This has really pointed out very unique, distinct differences between county and municipal government. There's a lot of the things that maybe in the general public, their general perception that has been publicized in the media about what could be done. A lot of that applies to municipal governments and not to counties. So we've had to make, we've had to learn that distinction because we don't own water and sewer. We don't have stormwater. We don't have a lot of the things that this is pushed toward. And as some other counties have discovered, whenever they prematurely go into contractual arrangements with these companies, they then have to go back and cancel those contracts. Rescind those contracts because they were a little ahead of the game when it comes to spending. So that's why, so from a general information standpoint, it's the public to know that we're not dragging our feet purposely or because there's not desire. It is because we're statutorily prohibited from moving forward at this point. And as the county, it's a whole different learning curve as Philip and Caleb are finding out from municipal government is looked at totally different in the NC Pro and a lot of the things that have been coming out. 90% of that information is applicable to municipal governments and not to counties. And so it's a, we're kind of a unique setting. Of course, we're the, the other thing that we have to realize is that we're in the same shape as every county in the United States. Not just the North Carolina, every county is in the same boat. So when this does come to fruition, there's going to be all of the, every, this, all these boards and county governments trying to move forward with the same projects and the same pace using the same contractors. So it's going to be a bit of an impasse at that point. So I just wanted to be, make sure everybody understands the distinction between those two forms of government and they're treated totally different under this ARP format.
I have met with three broadband providers in my office. Just be ready. When, when we can do this, can we be ready? And two of those are committed to our, to Avery County. Okay, so we're not just sitting here waiting. We're, we're getting a plan together so when we can release the funds, we'll have some infrastructure and some logistical things already put together that we can move forward. But you can't spend a lot of money on this. You know, we need to know something. So if you can twist someone's arm and rally.
With new legislation, make some additional funding sources from the state to.
Right.
Supplemental funding. So that is another benefit of kind of waiting to see if maybe we can match our dollars with state money and we can spread it and make a bigger impact.
We had like a state budget or something to look at.
Um, that would be good. Commissioner Aldrich, if you can make that happen.
I've heard there's such a thing, I don't know.
It used to have though.
It used to have.
It used to have state budget. The time we live. And the most overwhelming part of it is the reporting that is going to be necessary to spend these funds. But there's no guidelines. They can tell you, there's no form to do the report on. There's no sample of how in-depth they want the report to be. They just say document, document, document. So help.
There's some local governments that are almost to the point of saying, we'll give the money back.
Yeah.
Rather than deal with the burden trying to.
That's why I'm going to keep the interest money at least. I mean, yeah, we, there's some, there was comments during the class that this, you know, there's no way a small county, there's no way these small municipalities can do this. Can we just send the money back? Hopefully they'll get the bags ironed out and we can move forward. That's all I have.
I think you did a good job, don't you? Yes, it is. All right, we'll move right along to 3.4B. Our finance officer, Caleb Hope.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
I will give an update. I talked to Gary Porter with North Carolina Capital Management Trust, talking about how we can separate our interest funds for the ARP and make sure we keep it separate. Those will be unrestricted funds and we can use for any government, general government purpose. And he informed me that the Federal Reserve is going to be meeting shortly. Hopefully we'll see some interest rate changes. Start seeing better return on investment of our holdings at Capital Management Trust. So he's saying very positive that we're going to see some changes there right now. As you know, investment earnings have been very, very low, but hopefully we'll see that turn around and we'll see some of that ARP funding return a high yield of investment. Maybe we can have some liberty in what we use that money. Hopefully coming in the future. I have a few items here today. Item number one, the Avery County Sheriff's Office has received reimbursement from the NC ACC Workers Compensation Pool for the purchase of three bulletproof vests. Request the board adopt the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay equipment, general fund line item 5100.7410 in the amount of $1,500 and to credit law enforcement support, general fund line item 3616 in the amount of $1,500.
I hear a motion to approve. Move with approval. I hear this. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Item number two, the sheriff's office has received a grant from the High Country Charitable Foundation in the amount of $3,500 to fund expenses related to the Dayer program. Request the board adopt the following budget amendment to debit Dayer Drug Prevention, general fund line item 5100.5100 in the amount of $3,500 and to credit Avery County Schools SRR Program, general fund line item 3506 in the amount of $3,500.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Item number three, the Department of Agriculture Extension has been notified from NC State University that the county extension director's stipend was increased from $2,500 to $5,000. Due to an oversight by NC State, Avery County's director was inadvertently let out of this increase. The county's portion of this increase is $1,250. Request the board to adopt the following budget amendment. Salary county extension direction, director, general fund line item 6050.0200 in the amount of $1,250 and the credit fund balance appropriated, general fund line item 3990 in the amount of $1,250.
I hear a motion to adopt. All in favor, say aye.
Hate that he's not here, we could have.
Yeah, we could have.
Do you think he came to your ward now?
Never, not in Norberg's way.
Item number four, due to increased difficulty with billing vacancies in the Avery County Jail, salary scale adjustments have been made to cover the increase in payroll expenses. A budget amendment is required. Request the board adopt the following budget amendment to debit salary chief jailer, general fund line item 5200.0200 in the amount of $3,532. Debit salary jailer dispatcher, general fund line item 5200.0210 in the amount of $42,739. Debit FICA administration, general fund line item 5200.0500 in the amount of $3,540. Debit retirement, general fund line item 5200.0600 in the amount of $5,293. Debit 401K retirement, general fund line item 5200.0800 in the amount of $1,459. Credit fund balance appropriated, general fund line item 3990 in the amount of $56,563.
I hear a motion to adopt.
Move with approval.
I hear a second.
We created this.
Oh, we did. All in favor, say aye.
That's all I have for you, if I can answer any questions.
Be good, like last.
I had one budget amendment last month, so I brought a few more this month.
Hey, looks great. Y'all know that, okay? So everyone just want to thank you. Moving forward in this ARP, I'd rather have you by my side than anybody else, thank you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure, great team. The motto, we are Avery County, I, I feel that on this floor. We are Avery County. We may not be able to get over one person, but we all bond together and we can figure anything out.
I didn't even tear up during the class. It's just.
Rubbed your head a little bit.
It's all a partnership, isn't it?
It is, it really is. I'm not to be a part.
One, you've got one can disrupt the whole thing. But when you, a committee together that will work and want to see improvement, you can do a lot.
That's right.
And we can see what has been done.
Yep.
It's like Woody was talking about it a couple of days or so last week. And we are proud of what we've gotten done. And we want to keep moving on.
That's right.
If we have to take the money back, we're going to take cash, and I'm going to go and throw it to the White House lawn. And he's going to drive me up there and say, you red tape a bunch of people.
Caleb, thank you for what you did.
Yes, we did.
We have to make out the best employees.
Yeah, we got the best board. So that bank I'll ask. Y'all learn much?
Thank you. All right, we'll move right along to 3.4C, our attorney's report. We have the best attorney to kick us out of trouble.
Well, I don't have anything that the board needs to consider today. Quandie Lee was the only thing. Y'all have questions about anything?
Just like to say thank you.
It's more than we about killed it last week.
Great board and great people to work with.
I know, Phil said that just about killed you. But we do thank you, Michelle.
I've been at least 20 minutes between calls.
Then one day you said, you dollar.
Don't tell my secret. I'm sorry, Michelle, but it was just a tough time. It's a tough week.
It's like Vegas, on Thursday.
That's right.
Right. All right, we'll move right along to 3.5, staff reports and requests. Do we have any?
Will you help, Ms. Chairman?
3.6, closed session. All right. Now then, we will prove that we've worked a little bit. 3.7, approval of the minutes, August 26, 2001, board workshop. September 20, 2021, regular session. October 4, 2021, regular session. We've all had time to read the minutes. Do we have any corrections or anything in the minutes?
We approve his report.
All right. All right, we have a motion to approve, and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
I thank Cindy for keeping these minutes up today the way she does, because it's a good job with everything else she's got to do.
All right, we'll move right along to 3.8, agenda consent items. Phillip's already talked a little bit about them, and we've had them before us to read. Does anyone have any questions on the agenda consent items? If not, they'll be approved by general consent. All right, 3.9, informational items. Do you have any informational items that anybody wants to mention? We only have one meeting in the month now. And you're off for Veterans Day and for Thanksgiving today, for Thanksgiving.
We all need a special meeting on the 15th to get the schedule of budgets for the upcoming revaluation.
All right.
I'd like to say too, we met with the CTE business class at the school last week, CNE. They saw here and it was really enjoyable.
It was.
I forgot one thing. Sorry. And Anne's sitting right here. So the Chamber of Commerce Dinner is the 19th, Friday night at the Best Restaurant. Starts at 5 o'clock, and our tickets, you need to order them today. So if you'd like to go, Anne is here. For the Chamber Commerce Dinner. 19th. So let her know if you'd like to come so she can fit you on the list.
All right.
Oh, and one more thing. I'm sorry. Mark your calendars for December 15th for the employee Christmas luncheon.
It will be at our community center.
Looking forward to getting to serve the employees that have worked so hard during the last year and a half during this pandemic. I think I'll have to roll out red carpet and do more than just keep the sunglasses filled, so. We've had a lot of great employees do a lot of hard work. I hope they realize that we appreciate them.
Asked our commissioners if they would to bring a $25 gift card or.
And a $100 reel for me.
Or you can buy your gift and bring it, or whatever you'd like to do. We have a good time with that. All right. Already, how about our upcoming meetings? And does anyone have anything that they want to comment about? Y'all speak up.
I'd like to mention one thing. We had a very unfortunate thing that happened last week. I believe we had a. But no one was hurt, as far as I know. But we need to recognize Eric, his department. They had downloaded tractor and trailer, I shall probably, truck was loaded, 20 was here. They had downloaded, which is a very painstaking procedure, even with equipment. It was handled very well and very quickly.
Let me speak.
It's just, you know, it's amazing what he and his department did down there. And I think they need to be recognized and thanked, so if you see Eric, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? It's not, I hear a motion that we adjourn. And we're all in favor of going home, I think.